Let us up.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well spoken, Clark. Thank you very much. All right, Carmen, if you could just make sure that you have roll call here. All the trustees present or had officials on Andy Hebine from Rockville and John Ray. Yeah, I'm sergeant. Yeah, full name. There you go. From Village of Sawville as well. So, um, very good. Uh, let's go to minutes. I'm looking for a motion in a second for the approval of the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three village board meeting and the September twenty-sixth joint village board planning commission and to file the April sixth, twenty twenty-three police inquiry commission, April tenth, twenty twenty-three police inquiry commission, the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three fire police inquiry commission, the May twentieth, second, twenty twenty-three police inquiry commission, the August ninth, twenty twenty-three architectural review board, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three planning commission, the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three parks and recreation board minutes, meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. I'll say in.
Have a motion in a second and discussion changes. And that you saw there that they need some work. It's always our clerk does a great job. So you have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. All right, come to that favorite, favorite time of ours to let our folks speak. Uh, Mr. Meyer, I believe you would like to say something here.
Sure, this is my as my dad. As a resident, I've been here for over forty years or whatever. We've seen a lot. And I want to thank the president for running a great meeting last Tuesday to be easily got out of hand and put it under control of what everybody's speaking, say what was there. The only thing I would add to that is basically the trustee should have been limited for three minutes.
I'm sorry, trustee.
The trustee should have been limited to three minutes also. Other than that, the other thing is I think we need to recognize Phil with the and the former pick and save and shop area for being upgraded. Such an improvement for that side of town where I lived. I mean, it was quite an eyesore for a long time. And where Phillips will put that kind of investment into Village of Grafton is we need businesses like that. We need to keep them. So thank you to them. The other thing is basically when I was reviewing those other things for last Tuesday, I would really like not now, but what is an adverse impact when it comes to like a page three on the report that guy said? Because I've got a different opinion. I believe that more than adverse impact, if there's village staff that supported this stuff, how many of this staff live in the Village of Grafton? And other than reporting to you takes our input? Oh, uh, we can have different. So we've been been out here for forty years or whatever. I understand one raised tax base and stuff like that. But quality life naturally doesn't be jammed so many people in small places. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Um, we would, um, I will take your email address and I think we can get a, um, uh, an email out to you on adverse impact.
They've got that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak here? All right, uh, let's move on to business that's presented by the president, which I think is presented in the normal fashion. Uh, let's go to resolution ordinances, action and update the ARPA project list update. Jesse, let's roll into that.
Absolutely. What I have before the village board this evening is a proposed update to our, uh, project listing for the ARPA funds. These are the village specific American Rescue Plan Act funds. Dating back to, um, twenty twenty-one, we have had, we have funded a series of special, uh, one-time projects with this, uh, federal money made available, um, through the government in response to the COVID pandemic. That said, we have carried out expenditures for, uh, building approval approvals to the, uh, building improvements, uh, to the library, uh, equipment purchases, um, roof repairs, um, technology upgrades, infrastructure upgrades, um, as well as, um, speci- speci- uh, specialized equipment for, uh, various departments. That said, um, late in twenty twenty-two, we had a discussion at the village board level about prioritizing projects for twenty twenty-three. It was a very good discussion. However, it was a very quick discussion and unfortunately, um, and unfortunately, uh, that's it. I'm done. Get your three minutes. I'm sorry. Um, thank you, folks. Here's the list. No, um. And so what happened though during the course of that conversation, there was an unfortunate oversight of the fact there were previous, um, um, expenses paid. Therefore, when the list of priorities for twenty twenty-three was identified, um, we frankly overcommitted. Um, so with that, we want to revisit this project list. Um, I'm proposing some reprioritization of funds. Um, but I will walk you through that, uh, at this point. So that said, um, the twenty twenty-three projects are identified there in the list. I did line through items that I am proposing to remove from the list at this time. Um, and then a new allocation for twenty twenty-four is at the top of the attachment. I will walk through the twenty twenty-three projects, um, quickly at this point. We updated the village hall phone system, um, coming in right around, uh, uh, very close to budget. The utility SCADA updates, this is the computer system that monitors the utility infrastructure and will dispatch utility crews to problem areas, whether it be a well that's malfunctioning, a lift station that's malfunctioning, too much water volume, um, one of the, uh, water towers, water level fluctuate, what have you. Um, that computer, uh, has been upgraded to provide, um, uh, reliable dispatching for the, uh, utility crew. Um, the Veterans Park Pavilion Project, that was, that did receive an allocation for twenty twenty-three of three hundred thousand dollars. I will revisit that in just a moment. There was an allocation of, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for the fire department kitchen remodel, um, hood system, major appliances, and then, um, alarm panel, um, updates. That has not been carried out to date. There was a purchase of a one-yard dump truck for our public works, uh, department. There was a project earmarked for PD locker room repairs and upgrades, as you would recall, um, looking to replace, uh, locker room, uh, lockers and benches, but also to repair, uh, necessary plumbing issues as well. Um, there was a line item to change over, um, from incandescent to LED light fixtures in the various village, uh, facilities. That has been taken off of the list because we are actually, um, committed to that and doing that over time. I'll use village hall here as an example. We are primarily all the way over to, um, LED fixtures as they either burn out or need to be replaced. Um, our public works has been installing new LED fixtures. So the majority of lights here in village hall are LED and in office areas throughout the village, they are, uh, almost all over to LED. There are some bigger projects, um, in the future that we may want to explore such as garage lighting and whatnot. But that said, I think there are other significant priorities that we, we should, um, think about here. And I'll get to those as I get into the twenty twenty-four proposal. Uh, one item that we are looking to place the order for the parts this year, but then a carryover of about ten thousand dollars into next year for the actual installing are the replacement light poles on the highway sixty bridge. We literally had one of these rust out at the bottom base and we had to take it down because it was getting to the point of being a hazard. Um, and it has been, um, down for some time. Um, to Director Thomas's credit, she worked, um, diligently to get through to the Department of Transportation to get some specs. As to highway sixty is the Department of Transportation's role, the state's road. What are their acceptable specs for us to put reestablished light poles on the bridge? Um, and finally was able to make headway there, got some specs, um, um, got an estimate. And so we are in a place to order those parts this year, um, in the amount of about forty-two thousand dollars with ten thousand of that carried into twenty twenty-four for installation. Uh, we did update, uh, the, uh, wifi, um, and some minor, um, AV upgrades here in village hall as well as the, uh, municipal services facility, the public works boardroom, um, for reliability reasons. And then we did purchase a stump grinder in the public works department. So now, as I mentioned, I did, I am proposing to roll back, uh, some of those projects with regards to the fire ma- fire department kitchen remodel. I believe as we're looking at a consolidation effort, there are other ways to approach that for funding mechanisms. Whether it be through the, through a referendum, it's as part of the referendum itself, whether it's impact fees as we, um, look to remodel, very similar to what we did with the public works building when we built that, but also what we did for the police department when we remodeled that building. Um, or just a borrowing in the future as needs really progress with regards to additional full-time staff. So I think there's other funding options there, um, which is why I'm proposing to roll that off of the ARPA project list at this time. And we can explore that in the future. I did touch on the, um, LED light changeover project, but the, uh, PD locker room repairs and upgrades, um, I am looking at, um, changing that allocation of ARPA funds because what you will see later this week with the publication of the executive budget, I'm looking to combine ARPA dollars as well as act twelve, the extra share, the extra shared revenue or additional shared revenue from the state of Wisconsin. Act twelve set forth shared revenue dollars, the village is realizing, uh, just over three hundred thousand dollars of that, that act twelve money. And it needs to be used for very specifically for various reasons, police, fire EMS, public works, transportation or dispatch. Those are the primary, um, categories. And I'm looking, and you'll see this in my, uh, executive budget when it's published. But I am looking to touch those primary areas being public works, fire EMS and police. So I'm looking at a combination or will be proposing a combination in my executive budget of partial ARPA dollars and then partial act twelve state shared revenue dollars for the police department locker room repairs. Um, and I will discuss, um, that full funding as I present the executive budget, but it would be a combination thereof of funding for that particular project. Um, so then that brings us up to twenty twenty-four or the top of the page. And this is the, um, proposed, um, priority list, um, looking to utilize and expend the remainder of the ARPA funds as well as interest earned on that specific account. Looking to uptick the allocation, uh, to be applied towards the Veterans Park Pavilion Project. Unfortunately, what we're seeing are, um, costs that frankly were not, um, um, anticipated. One most recently was, uh, late last week, we, uh, received a note from, uh, we energies that going to a three-phase electrical, um, service to the new, the newly proposed Veterans Park Pavilion, uh, was way outside of any cost estimate we thought. Even working with, uh, um, an expert being architecture who designs these buildings and has built these buildings, that is proving to be an unanticipated cost. The reason for the three-phase electrical is because of the sizable HVAC system, but also making sure we have the electrical capacity for the warming kitchen and the AV equipment in the meeting room as well. So, uh, we are looking to uptick, um, that, uh, particular, um, allocation of ARPA funds. Uh, I spoke to the PD locker room, uh, repairs, but then also as part of the executive budget, um, looking to make all the puzzle pieces fit, if you will, with the limited amount of levy we have available to us and still being able to accomplish different projects and purchases and, uh, changes. We looked, I am proposing to move the Limekiln parking lot paving project out of our capital budget and onto the ARPA project listing to get, uh, Limekiln Park repaved. Um, the pavement in the parking, various parking areas in Limekiln is in very rough shape. Um, and that said, to free up space, if you will, within the, um, budget, um, I am proposing to move that project into the ARPA listing, um, again, for the reasons I mentioned as far as the other items being, um, pulled off of the list under this proposal. Um, so that is, uh, ten thousand foot look at an updated ARPA project list for the board to consider and the reasoning behind the proposed changes.
Okay, let's bring this up for discussion. I'll, uh, look for a motion in a second.
I'll second.
All right, motion in a second. Uh, any questions here with Amy who had the first motion here?
So really, so really the only two items that are being removed totally is the LED as they're getting placed when necessary.
Yep.
And the kitchen remodel, the fire department, which will be part of that consolidation whole.
Correct. Part of that mechanism, I believe. Yes. Yep.
Okay, where we at with sponsorship for the pavilion?
I have two very strong commitments. I do not want to, um, publicize them right now as I'm looking to get them under contract, if you will, uh, put it to paper. But I have two very strong commitments, um, and I have, um, meetings lined up with three other, um, stakeholders that sound very, uh, positive with it. But, um, I will say, uh, significant commitments at this point. Once I have a level of documentation between myself and, and the donor and run past legal, of course, I will look to make that announcement, uh, public. But yes, we've got, we've garnered interest. Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes. Um, Jim, go ahead.
Um, Jesse, you mentioned, uh, what we energies has got to bring us more money at Dutch Park.
Yes, sir.
How much more?
Uh, I looked at it and I'm sorry, I don't recall the number and I do not want to misspeak, but it was, um, si- significantly more than we thought. We, we did truly think we were able going to be able to utilize is existing infrastructure to simply run the new service in where the new sculpt is from across the street to get to the vets park pavilion location and it will include, I believe, a new transformer. I, I have to review the scope, but it is a significant amount more than what we initially thought. Um, and so again, just, um, looking to, um, adjust our allocation to address those, um, issues that have popped up.
So you could get that to us in the future?
Yes, absolutely. I can provide that, uh, we energies. Yep.
Anything else?
So Jesse, we heard a lot last week about, uh, a gateway to the village in the context of triangle. And in the absence of something there, the bridge over the Milwaukee River serves as that gateway. So I'm curious as to whether the bridge light pole replacement, if those new light poles would have the ability to attach things, whether it be banners seasonally or flower baskets, things of that nature.
Actually, that's an excellent question. That was part of the issue we were having in getting it stoked out or specked out, excuse me. Uh, we want to make sure that, um, it meets wind load because you put any size banner on it, there's a wind load issue because they're up in the elements. But also too, um, how they mount to the pedestals on that bridge, which is technically state trunk highway sixty. So yes, all of that was considered and yes, they would accommodate, um, banners. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
You bet.
And as far as the, um, uh, police department locker room repairs, is it a significant, uh, part of the, uh, act twelve funding? I mean, is there, is there a large enough portion to get some of the things done?
We are definitely going to prioritize the plumbing issues, um, with the funding. Um, that said, I do believe, um, based on previous discussions, the overall, um, scope of the project may have to be broken apart and revisited. Um, just to make sure it's, it's done in a cost-effective manner, but we do know we have a here and now of the plumbing repairs that need to be addressed.
Okay, and they'll be funding for?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess, uh, uh, last, last comment here, uh, I want to make sure we're really clear here because we did have some reporting that we overspent.
We did not.
And we did not overspend. Uh, it was essentially an overcommitment of funds.
Correct.
Which is very typical with our defending. I think everybody's having that same issue. You kind of look to see what you can spend. And I think, uh, we just don't want to get to twenty-four and, uh, have to rush while figuring out where we're going to spend our money.
Correct.
An ongoing process.
Yep.
I think with every governmental agency be able to do that. Second thing, um, I'd like to be able to just, uh, touch base on it is I'm really happy with the ARPA funding because what we're getting out of the ARPA funding, the majority of it is really in parks and it's really looking to, um, be something visible for, as Clark said, you know, the entryways into our, into our community. And, you know, I think we oftentimes forget about Limekiln Park because it's on south end of town, but, uh, that, that's good. I'm glad to see that we're using funds for that. Uh, in regards to the lease funding, I think there's going to be a, um, you know, there were some concerns on village board members about the overall cost, but that will be addressed next week.
That will.
Uh, in a modified plan, correct?
Correct. Correct. Again, I'm looking at partial ARPA dollars for that project and partial acts twelve dollars for that project. The priority being on the plumbing repairs because that is here and now something that, an amenity that is appropriate for our staff. And then, um, looking to address the overall project and the scope thereof, um, a- as we're able to.
Very good. So we have a motion in a second. Uh, let's go to both here. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jesse, for that. Uh, let's go to the resolution of intent to move forward with a referendum for creation of consolidation fire, you know, not pertinent.
Absolutely.
We've all kind of seen the resolution. We've looked through that. Uh, Jesse, any quick?
Sure.
Information on this?
Really, um, hitting on the high points of the resolution. There are three main facets to this resolution that's before the village board this evening. First and foremost, the resolution calls for formal action to affirm the village's intention on pursuing a funding referendum for the purposes of creating a consolidated fire and EMS department with the village of Sawville. Um, we have, as you know, we have a working group, um, with representatives from Sawville and Grafton coming together, um, on a regular basis to talk through, um, things such as the Ozaki County ARPA, the Ozaki County ARPA funding, the, um, state act twelve shared revenue dollars, and really our group took the responsible tact, I believe, of a wait and see approach. We wanted to see how act twelve came in and impacted the two communities being Sawville and Grafton. We wanted to see how Ozaki County finalized that ARPA grant program really as the seed money to get a consolidated, uh, uh, department going. Um, so that said, um, that dust has, that proverbial dust has settled. And with all that information now known, it has become apparent that in order to really make a good, sound transition to, um, extend, um, um, and expand the full-time staffing model while still maintaining paid-on call. That is still going to be a very important part of the department to ensure coverage, um, and also frankly, response volume for larger incidents. Um, that said, to engage more full-time staff and fill out a staffing model, um, a referendum will in fact be needed. Um, what the referendum will look to do would be to, um, ex- at this point, our vision is that the referendum would look to, um, allow the municipalities to exceed a tax levy cap and capture money specifically for fire and EMS dollars. That will be spelled out as we move into this process, but that is our initial thought process and vision right now as far as what a referendum may take shape as. That said, we are targeting the April election, the spring election, um, to have this referendum on a ballot. A formal referendum question is due to the state of Wisconsin, uh, by January, um, in order to be placed, um, in order to be, um, confirmed and then in turn placed on the ballot. Um, so with that, uh, the working group is finalizing working numbers. Those working numbers to create a cost-sharing formula are based around things such as equalized value of a community. That is the state's, um, so we assess valuation, land valuation here in the village. The state of Wisconsin utilizes equalized value, which basically states that a house here in Sawville or here in Grafton and Sawville has a similar value to a house up in Rhinelander. It's equalized across the state. So that is the state's approach to land and improvement valuation known as equalized value. Um, that, uh, school districts utilize that as well because normally they cross multiple jurisdictional boundaries as part of their district. So they use, um, equalized value. Anyway, um, so as part of our cost-sharing analysis, we would base it on population, equalized value and then call volume. Right now, that is kind of the, um, catch as we're trying to finalize these numbers. Um, the town of, uh, Sawville, um, who is serviced by the village of Sawville, also utilizes services from Fredonia and the village of Newburgh. And trying to get that amalgamation of call data together into something that works with our funding formula proposal or thought process i- is proving to be a little bit of a hangup. That said, within the coming week, I believe we'll have that and thus be able to get a good set of, um, um, forecasted numbers or idea and estimates that we can bring forward and formally present. We do not want, the last thing we want to do is get ahead of ourselves and put, um, uh, um, inaccurate information out there and then have to myth bust. So we are really working hard to do our due diligence with that. So all of that being said, um, we will be meeting with the towns of Sawville and Grafton to advise them as they are customers of our respective villages as well to go through a lot of this information in greater detail. So that is the first facet, if you will, of the resolution being formal action to affirm the village's intent to pursue a funding referendum. I should note the village of Sawville will be going to their respective village board next week as that is their regularly scheduled meeting with a similar, um, resolution. The second facet, um, is, uh, actually the second and third facet are, um, in the same vein in that the resolution does call for a not-to-exceed clause for two professional services contracts. One professional service contract being with Miller Communications to assist both Grafton and Sawville with public education and outreach efforts. This is the same firm the city of Cedarburg is using. Um, having met with the city administrator, uh, from Cedarburg, they come highly recommended. Um, and therefore there is a level of comfort. They are actually also Miller Communications is the preferred provider by the League of Wisconsin municipalities, whether it be for referendum efforts or any other public outreach efforts. So long story short, there is, they're highly recommended and have a solid background in this area. Another professional service contract with a not-to-exceed clause and a fifty-fifty cost share with, uh, Sawville would be a, uh, facility study, basically taking a look at defining facility needs and improvements in order to accommodate a transition to a consolidated department that encompasses additional full-time staff. Um, this company actually worked with Sawville on their police department updates and they also come very highly recommended. So there are two not-to-exceed clauses built into the, uh, resolution as well. So, uh, revisiting that first facet, the affirmation, um, of a, a intent to pursue a funding referendum, services contract not to exceed with Miller Communications for public outreach and a services contract for a facility study to help define facility needs and improvements to again, help reach a number that is accurate for, uh, funding purposes in the future. There is a two-thirds to one-third cost share on the communications project and a fifty-fifty cost share with the facility, um, review. That is the, um, rundown of the resolution that is in front of the group this evening.
Very good. It's just a resolution. I'll need a law for a motion in a second to bring it to the table.
I'll offer.
Motion.
I'll second.
Going to offer a motion in a second. Um, any discussion on this? Anything we need to clarify? Jim.
Jesse, uh, Zimmerman Design Group is a fifty-fifty cost share?
Yes, sir. Uh, they would take a look at the Sawville station and the Grafton station respectively, um, to determine the, uh, best course of action to facilitate or, uh, to provide for amenities for a larger full-time staffing model, um, at both locations.
So my question is, how come Miller Communications is not a fifty-fifty cost share?
Uh, because the, um, level of communication mailing and printing would be smaller, um, for Sawville than it would be for Grafton. Um, that is a, um, a estimation, um, that we worked out at the, uh, working group and it seemed reasonable, um, which is why I plugged it into the, um, resolution here. Really, that's based upon the, um, printing and outreach costs um, as proposed by, um, Miller Group.
Any other questions? Okay, we have an offer, a motion in a second. Um, before we go into that, just do want to let you know that, uh, one of the things that we were tasked with is reaching out to the, uh, to the town. Did have a discussion today with Lester Bartel, uh, the town chairman, just to let him know where we're going. And, uh, again, uh, there might be some opportunity for us to cost share with the town, um, again, as we bring more folks into this, uh, with the communication and the design of the, uh, the design of, uh, of the, uh, our facilities. So we're hopeful of that. So, um, again, offer motion in seconds, complete. We vote here on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Our report of the planning commission, um, let's go into that with the group in our, we have two ordinance here. I'd like to take them separately, um, if we can.
The first ordinance coming out of the plan commission is some minor amendments to, uh, chapter nineteen, the zoning code. Um, it is primarily housekeeping in nature to clarify processes and whatnot. Uh, with that, Director Wolf is available to speak to, uh, specifics of those, um, ordinance updates.
Okay, I'll need a, uh, a motion in a second for this ordinance.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion on this? Any questions for Jesse company? All right, we have motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The second ordinance, uh, regarding, um, solar.
This is an ordinance to amend the planned unit development for Advocate Aurora Healthcare, um, at nine seven five Port Washington Road. Um, at the recent plan commission meeting, um, uh, Aurora is proposing a, uh, solar panel array to the north of their built-out campus. It is on their property that they own. However, that property is currently vacant. Um, they are looking at, um, either staging or building out a large solar array to help not only, um, feed their operations on site, but if the potential exists, back into the energy grid, uh, through this, uh, solar energy resource. Um, that said, it's, uh, important to note because it was a point of discussion at the plan commission that, um, staff Um, that said, it's uh, important to note because it was a point of discussion at the plan commission that um, staff did take a look at the um, pilot agreement. The payment in lieu of taxes. So the interesting, unique thing with um, hospitals is that if they rent space for doctor's operations, that is taxable. The hospital itself is not, so i- it's this amalgamation of taxable and non-taxable. Um, so each year, um, the finance folks from Aurora. Reach out to our village assessor and um, Director Stodhar, and they walk through any changes to the floor plan. Whether it be um, for-profit space or not-for-profit space and reach in essence uh, in, in agreement. Um, as to the valuation and taxation of their campus and facilities. Um, that said, at this point, um. That will need to be um, ironed out, but considering um, Aurora has been very forthcoming with even the most minute changes. On their campus, we believe um, with a very high level of comfort that should the pilot uh, need to be revisited. They will in good faith revisit that with regards to the build-out of the solar array. Um, so that said, um, from a staff standpoint, we do not have concerns with regards to um, approval of the ordinance amending the P U D.
Okay, very good, um, we're looking for a motion in a second, uh, ordinance recommending an amendment to the planned unit development P U D for advocate. For our health at nine seventy five Port Washington Road, be approved on the motion in a second.
Commit to motion?
I'll second.
Good motion in a second, any discussion on this? Uh, Jessica, I do, I do want to let everybody know here that uh, we did look very carefully at the solar array. And we did request that uh, the solar ready be um, be kind of. Uh, it, it just the uh, the areas on Port Road um, kind of be built up. So uh, either that with vegetation, just to make sure that we don't have solar rays being seen from the streets, so that's how we're working, so.
Just to bring up a question, so this is similar to what's over by the uh, the Little League Park and then across the street.
Yes, correct, yep, very similar.
And how big in size? Similar size?
It's three megawatt and approximately eleven acres.
Okay, very good, any further questions, discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Both opposed, say aye, and that motion carries, thank you very much. All right, uh, let's go to Department of Officers Report, Jesse.
Uh, yes, certainly, thank you, a couple of um, um, updates. Uh, please remember, uh, upcoming on October eleventh, we will have the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Riverbend Park. I'm happy to report today, they tested and then immediately winterized the fully functional splash pad. Um, so we will not be uh, firing that off at the ribbon-cutting, but it is in full working order and um, it was great. We had the contractor on site um, to be able to, you know, test the functionality of it, everything is in great working order. But then right away turn around and teach our staff how to properly winterize um, our, this new amenity. So um, great day for it, uh, so that worked out quite well, but um, yes, we will be having a ribbon-cutting uh, the afternoon of October eleventh. Um, I will resend that uh, information out to the board. Um, hydrant flushing is ongoing in the community, um, we have been posting updates regularly to social media as they move. To the various areas of the village to do this maintenance effort, um, each year, uh, the utility comes through and exercises the hydrants and flushes them. One, this gets sediment out of the line, um, two, this makes sure all the valves associated with fire hydrants are in good working order. And that there is proper water supply to the fire hydrants in case of emergency. Um, so this is an excellent maintenance program that we do, but it will lead to some questions because. As you open up a hydrant with a large flush of water, sometimes that will stir up some sediment and some folks may get um, discolored water for a short time. All that needs to be done there is simply um, run faucets for a short while, that flushes through the system very quickly and we're back to normal. But um, that is a, a, a very responsible program that our utility carries out each year. Um, last but not least, um, just to note that um, we are slowly beginning and despite the weather. Um, moving towards winterizing um, operations, in the coming weeks, uh, folks will see the restroom facilities at our parks. Uh, starting to be locked down and winterized um, as weather starts to turn. Um, you wouldn't, wouldn't know it today, but yes, uh, winter is coming. So those are um, some efforts that we are starting here um, in the village, so that is the brief update I have this evening.
Very good, let's go to the license, operator license approval. Um, we'll need a motion to approve.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll second.
There are motion in a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you very much, uh, let's go to reported bills, um. Take a look at that, I know there wasn't anything that came through as of uh. One o'clock today, Jesse, but I think, was there something else that came through?
Uh, there, there was, there were a couple of items uh, requested, um. Uh, we, we've worked to establish a, a Saturday deadline so staff can walk in on Monday morning, get the due diligence done and a report out. That said, there were some questions received today, um, that I'd just like to very quickly speak to. One being a charge for um, one thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars, uh, Grafton Mobile. Uh, for uh, new tires uh, and rims for a utility truck, this was four tires for an F three fifty super duty truck. Um, the vehicle has um, seventy-five thousand miles on it, was due um, for that maintenance. Um, there was a question about the one thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollar charge for P D Personnel Matters with. Uh, Sorello and Carlson attorneys, these are the attorneys that assist the Police and Fire Commission. Um, I'm understanding that charge was specifically related to um, providing guidance to the Police and Fire Commission. With regards to a recent uh, citizen complaint. Um, that said, there was one last uh, inquiry, two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars uh, charge to TACCO. That is an acronym that I don't specifically recall what the acronym stands for, but it is a shop in Brown Deer. That specializes in such things as traffic signage, traffic signals and other control functions. Um, that said, this was a replacement for replacement signs for pedestrian crossing, stop ahead, signal ahead. Stop and school crossing signs, so really beefing up our um, pedestrian safety type of signage. Um, so that was an order from TACCO, those were the three items that came in.
Very good, any further questions off that? Ready, you want me in a second? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. At this point in time, um, like to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. Twenty point eight five one G comparing with legal counsel, the governmental body who is rendering moral and written advice. Considering strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved, um, which is seventeen forty-three. Wisconsin Avenue, I'll need a motion in a second.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I need.
Aye.
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 I do not anticipate any action coming out of closed session, um, so we'll, I will be closing out the uh, Zoom meeting um, for this evening. Um, and the adjourn, adjournment time will be noted in the minutes.